Joining us.
Here, Your Honor.
Alrighty, how are you feeling, Mr. Clerk?
We're working on it, Your Honor.
Okay, do you need a couple of minutes?
Yes, please.
We really appreciate all those guests in attendance and of course my colleagues on the council. We will call council to stand in session. Mr. Clerk, do we need a roll call?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, so we are starting with our standing update on COVID-19. Time has been set aside for an update on COVID-19 emergency and this is an item that usually is pretty extensive and so I like to open it up with what we're going to discuss with a bit of an agenda of what we're going to discuss for today. We will of course talk about COVID numbers. Our city manager is going to focus on, let me see, I think I have a list here. Update on carers expenditures, all that we have approved at our emergency council meeting last week as well as any other cares funds that we have been allocating for the needs of our community. We will also have an update on utility assistance. We had talked about trying an innovative approach to helping with utility assistance for our community and working with our utility companies directly. We have an update on pop-up testing and testing in the city of Tucson. And then of course we're going to be talking about our mask ordinance and our curfew and the enforcement of our curfew. The way that I'd like to start our conversation on this particular item is that I want to talk about numbers. You know, where we are. In Arizona, reported today were 12,314 COVID positive cases. It is a record in a single day in Arizona. In Pima County, 957 cases were reported today. The newspaper had a different number that alarmed me and in looking at AZDHS, the actual number is 957 cases today in Pima County. Positivity rate as of yesterday was 515 cases per 100,000 residents. For the last week, we have full data for there was a testing positivity rate of 14%. We heard from Pima County Administrator yesterday that the current rate of COVID-19 spread should be a wake-up call for all to comply with a mask mandates with curfew as well as other elements of the most recently adopted health advisories in Pima County. And we know that Arizona, Arizona Search Line reported no ICU beds statewide over the weekend. Last week, our hospitals wrote to the governor urging a list of actions including a mandatory curfew statewide, that he pass a mandatory mask mandate statewide and that he would move on prohibiting gatherings of more than 25 people along other measures. And I just want to thank my colleagues on the council because we acted immediately with the measures we felt we needed to take last Tuesday, which I'm hoping that Governor Ducey acts immediately with at least simple measures that he can pass. And so I just wanted to let you all know that after our vote last week, I received a letter from the Greater Phoenix Leadership Health Task Force and that task force is made up of Banner Health, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Cigna, Dignity Health, Phoenix Children's Hospital, Vitalist, Valley Wise Health, United Healthcare, Honor Health, Envision, the Flynn Foundation, TGen, TriWest amongst others. Thanking Mayor and Council for our quick action on their request. So I will share that information with you all so that you have that letter with you. I also wanted to touch base before I hand this off to our city manager that last in May, the mayor and council supported to launch a pilot program for businesses to temporarily extend outdoor dining areas and receive approval within 72 hours. This was in addition to waiving easement and parking fees and to align with the governor's executive order, I would like to propose that my colleagues on the council amend the parklet policy that we moved on as a city and permanently extend outdoor dining for businesses. This will, this will help our locally owned restaurants and will really remove the concern from our local restaurants about having to reapply for any of these especially during these trying times. So hopefully we can consider that and start moving on it before the end of the year. So with that, I'd like to pass the microphone over to our city manager, Mr. Ortega, that will give us some necessary updates. Mr. Ortega?
Your mayor, thank you and I'll cover the financial piece first and then I'll get into the testing if that's okay as you outlined in the opening remarks. So first of all, I want to make sure that the council understands based on the direction you gave me at the last meeting, there will be no money left if you will, that we would have to turn back because it has not been expended. And just to refresh your memory on that, you gave me authorization to transfer four eligible salaries into the general fund. Having said that, that does not mean that those dollars are in, I mean they're physically in the general fund, but they haven't been allocated. And my recommendation, as I mentioned last meeting, is to continue down the path of the coronavirus relief fund strategic plan that you all established. So I just wanted everybody to rest assured that we have identified a way to do that to buy us a little bit more time and so that was the purpose there. Also, with regard to the emergency meeting that you held and some of the direction that you gave me, we have reached out to all of the agencies, all of the partner agencies. We have established agreements with them. They are in various processes with regard to their internal approvals and those kinds of things. On a parallel basis, I asked the staff to make sure that the application process was in process for them to get those additional dollars out. I expect that you'll see a lot of movement on that within the next couple of days at the latest. So we've got some good progress there and we'll get that money out that you had allocated in a very timely manner. With regard to the utility assistance, that has been a little more difficult in terms of implementing exactly what you'd asked me to do. Just to refresh your memory on that, you had suggested that we would allocate $500,000 per utility company or utility partner for a total of about $2.5 million. The idea was that the utilities would then match that amount and the intent was that that would be used for the delinquent bills that most all the utility companies have at this point. The utilities, particularly the external utilities of Southwest Gas and TEP do not have the authority to waive delinquent accounts. So I've come up with another thought and I shouldn't say I, we, because we've been talking with utility companies and with staff to try to develop something that got you close to where you were headed. So what I've suggested is that we would give them credit for the waiving of fees, disconnect fees and late fees so that those are the dollars that we use as our match or the match that you had asked us to obtain. I've also asked them to defer and work out a payment plan for the delinquent accounts and my suggestion and recommendation is 12 months. I understand that today the ACC voted to require at least a minimum of eight months for TEP. So I will be pushing that 12-month envelope for that, the remainder of the delinquent accounts. I believe that the Southwest Gas folks will be in front of the ACC in the not-too-distant future. So the idea is that we would provide them the dollars that you had allocated for the delinquent accounts, but if people are still delinquent, they would have time to pay their bill. And again, my recommendation based on the feedback I've gotten from you is a minimum of 12 months. The approach that I've taken on this is suggesting to the utility companies, all of them, to start with their existing low-income program. So if you remember, you gave me some guidance with some criteria that was expansive of that, which is fine. So the first step is for them to identify those folks that are in the low-income program. We deal with that first. The second is the expansion of that to capture those that you asked me to look at, specifically those that are 200% of median income and have been affected by COVID, etc. And so that'll be kind of, we'll call it tier two. The idea is to make sure that the dollars that you've allocated are utilized within the confines of that expanded area, if you will, that expanded group so that we can move that forward. I'm pretty much ready to go on that. I wanted to let you know it is not exactly what you'd asked me to do. I believe we've come up with a solution working with our partner, partner utilities that will give them that will give the money out, get the money out. And again, these will be specifically targeted to those delinquent accounts that exist. Mayor, I wanted to make sure I pause there in case there's any questions or any thoughts or commentary from council, if you're okay with it.
There is, Your Honor.
Yeah, Mr. Manager. I wanted to know if there was, if there was a certain number of customers in Southwest Gas and T E P that we can help alleviate their debt with the amounts that we had talked about previously? You're on mute.
That's going to be our T-shirt for two thousand twenty. You're on mute. So Mayor, the first tier of those that are in the low-income programs within those utilities are as follows. We have approximately, and I'm going to just do some quick math here, twenty-five, thirty, about thirty-five hundred low-income folks in the water sewer and environmental services group. We've got about thirty-seven hundred in T E P and about nineteen hundred in Southwest Gas. Now, keep in mind that that's just the first tier of the existing low income. As we start down the path of making it known about the expanded amount, those numbers are going to grow. They may even double across the board. So that gives you at least a thumbnail sketch of what that looks like.
Can you repeat those numbers again, Mr. Ortega?
Here, we've got about thirty-five hundred in the water sewer environmental services. We have thirty-seven, twenty-seven in T E P, or at T E P, and nineteen hundred and two in Southwest Gas.
That's the number of delinquent accounts?
No, those are the folks that are in the low income. Those are the folks that qualify in their low-income programs. Some of them, one account, some of them do not.
Do we have a number as to how many customers or residents we can help with the the numbers that we had talked about? The allegations that we had talked about?
Here, Mayor, the difficulty I'm having is there's a lot of overlap with some of these folks. And so they're not additive necessarily, because I suspect that some of our low-income program folks are already counted on Southwest Gas and T E P. Without scrubbing that data, I can't give it to you exactly. But what I do know is, as we expand the criteria that you gave me last time, that number's going to grow. And so we will capture, ultimately, I'm expecting, based on some info that I have, that we will be able to do some good, if you will, in terms of those that are in that first tier. Expanding it is going to, it's going to weigh off or at least come off quite a bit very quickly, because the numbers will be larger.
And I agree with you, Mr. Ortega, that we should, that we should request that it should be a twelve-month repayment period for, for our residents to be able to, you know, it would be, it would not be good if we, if the city of Tucson, where our CARES funds jump in, we pay for what we need to pay for, and then three months later, the utility is set off from the residence. So we want to make sure that those families and individuals that we do help have that extension to be able to continue paying their, their cost, their utility cost. Vice Mayor, you had a question or comment?
Couple of things with kind of how we're doing this, and I think we're on the right track. I think that the mayor suggested about twelve months is pretty spot on, but there's a couple of things we probably need to do. We've got to let our partners talk to the A C C and make sure that they can. What I don't want is the A C C messing around with our program. And, you know, we've run into that before. There, I've actually openly accused some of our community utility partners about hiding behind the A C C for things. In this case, when all four of them are telling me the same thing, that you can probably think that there's some truth to that. So I think that they've got to be able to work with the A C C to make sure, one, the way we do our program works. The other thing I'll say is, and I think this is important, is that, oh, well, two things. One is us, city council members in Tucson have direct lines to members of the A C C. We can directly talk to them about this, which the utilities can't, because it could be seen as, as parents of impropriety, but I'm happy to make calls on behalf of the city to different A C C members. The second thing I want to, or the third thing I want to bring up is regarding the twelve-month payment. And that is that if we were able to pledge a half-payment at the end of twelve months, we could probably work out a formula. You know, so say someone's, for the sake of easy math, say somebody's two forty delinquent. We'd go, look, we'll pick up a hundred and twenty of it, and the person who's delinquent will pick up ten bucks a month for twelve months. At the end of twelve months, we'll pay that, that missing balance. And there may be a way to formula, to run a formula out for that. That would help out both the utilities, enable us to legislate it, enable it to be in good faith. So those are kind of some of the things. And we'd obviously have to have some build-ins for people who are evicted after ten months and things of that nature, maybe getting a credit in their new residence. There'd be some things we could do to make sure that everybody got it, got it. And that's kind of where I'm, I'm going with this, is that I think there's some kinks to work out. But I'm pretty confident that if our team and the team from the stakeholders can kind of have a meeting of the minds, we can probably find a way to execute this program that's complying with the A C C, that works for the bookkeeping and account management of the utilities, and is deemed proper care of care dollars. That's kind of where my input is, and I don't know if we need a motion, but I think that's where the staff is headed.
Yeah, that's where we are. Vice Mayor, I know that our city manager and our finance department and our finance team have been doing a lot of work. I've been getting updates, every, every update that, every conversation that has been had. And I know the city manager talked about the waiving of the rest of the bill, the delinquent bill, is not possible. I know that we have representatives of T E P and Southwest Gas with us today. And I just wanted to ask you, Mr. Manager, what is the, I know that there's A C C requirements and, and certain administrative protocols that our utility companies are obliged to comply with. Can you, can you explain to us, or maybe T E P or Southwest Gas could jump in if, if they'd like? What is the, the concern about really erasing the rest of a customer's delinquent bill?
Sure, Mayor, and, and I mean, I'm not going to speak for the utilities. I'll let them jump on here in a minute. But I think it's important that you hear what great partners they really have been trying to, trying to work with. They've allocated their staff to really push the envelope on a variety of fronts. Unfortunately for them, they have some constraints that, that they don't have control over at the local level. You know, in fairness, on one issue, just to let you know, which made sense to me, and I understand it, I'm not sure how to maneuver through it, but it, but it does make sense, is a function of the amount of the delinquent bill. So, you know, to Vice Mayor Cunningham's point, if it's a hundred and twenty-dollar delinquent bill, and we're talking about ten dollars a month, does that, is that a bigger issue than if we just said six months? So that it's twenty dollars to try to get that, get that accomplished? And so that was an issue that was brought up by one of our partners. And, you know, I understand, I think what the direction has been from you is to work out something that lessens the burden across the board. And then again, keeping in mind that we saw larger electric bills or power bills in the summer because of the heat. Now, when it's getting colder, we're probably going to see larger gas bills. So the, so it may reverse in terms of the sheer need for this, Mayor. But I did, I did want to just point those out. If you would like to call on T E P, I know both T E P and Southwest Gas said that we have some folks.
Yeah, no, I absolutely agree with you, Mr. Ortega, that our partners at T E P and Southwest Gas, I mean, immediately, immediately contacted my office and put their staffs at their disposal, try and figure it out, how the best way to do this for customers and for City of Tucson residents. So I absolutely can attest them doing everything they possibly can to figure this one out. But it's a little bit tougher than what we expected. But I still believe that in partnership, we can get to the best place. One, that the A C C allows us. Two, that is best for, for the residents of our, of our city. So if, I don't know from T E P who's with us, but I do know that Walter Richter is with us from Southwest Gas. Hi, Walter, thank you.
I was on mute. Mayor Romero, members of council, city manager and assembled staff and the citizenry of Tucson, assembled here on this call. I'd like to just begin by thanking you for having this special meeting to discuss this extremely important issue. And I certainly can't speak for T E P, but I know from the entire community, we all agree that our citizens are in need right now and is incumbent upon us to collect as a community and do what we can to help these people in need. Just by way of background, I appreciate all the kind words that you just said, Mayor, and we've been working with Mr. Ortega, and I think we've had some good meetings. I would say that Southwest Gas, when this pandemic began, immediately self-imposed a moratorium on shut-offs, because we understand what goes on in our communities and people in need need essential services, and electricity, gas, and water are absolutely necessary. I have with me on the call today, Michelle Ansani. She is the director of our call center and has more information as far as any details that you may need about the customers that we're trying to, your constituents, that we are trying to help and get these CARES dollars to. Just by way of background, and I appreciate, some of this stuff was going on. We met with Mr. Ortega yesterday, and we're working with our regulatory groups. Tucson Electric was literally at the commission today to get some of this information, so it's evolving literally by the minute. And last night is when our regulatory group responded internally, just to say water and gas have been removed from the discussion presently, but we will be back. Mr. Ortega alluded to this earlier. But I guess in the utility world, and I appreciate Councilman Cunningham's words, we all remember when his father ran for the commission. And Councilman Cunningham may know more about the commission than many other people in the room right now. But when it comes to making some of these policies, we defer to the commission because they hold the great sway over all of our operations and how we do things. So are there specifics that you want to know about? Are you, you're saying, was your question, Mayor, directly about the twelve-month?
Yes, Walter, my question was the forgiveness of, of the debt by certain residents. In other words, part of the conversation that we had had as mayor and council was, let's directly put funds, CARES funds, to help, you know, low-income, those affected by COVID with utility assistance. And so what we had thought is just go directly to the utilities and just, you know, put our money to help pay. So two things, the twelve months for repayment, and then the forgiveness, what is the, I'd like to know the regulatory concerns as to forgiving portion of the bill to those that are delinquent? If the city of Tucson pays for half, or, you know, to help residents in Tucson. What we wanted to do is extend and expand the help for residents and families in Tucson. So just those two things, and I do see Stephen Eddy as well from T E P is with us. So, you know, jump in and fill in the blanks where you can, and then I'll, and I'll open it up to Stephen Eddy representing T E P as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Walter, would you like me to jump in?
Well, yeah, please, please go ahead, and then we can get, I don't care. We're largely in the same, in the same boat as far as this goes with dealing with our regulators.
I'll echo the same sentiments that Walter provided. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for having us. As Walter alluded to, we are a regulated entity by the A C C. And I think when looking at this proposal, and I think, again, we thank the mayor, we thank the manager in coming up with this creative solution. We've got to be mindful of our entire customer base, which is outside of the city Tucson as well. So I think that's kind of the constraints that we've got to work within for these care dollars. But I think bottom line is, we want to help our customers in any which way that we can. So whether that's waiving late fees and providing payment plans, whether that's eight months, whether that's twelve months, or as long as twenty-three months in some, some cases. We just want people, our customers, to get the assistance that they need so that they can continue to get reliable energy. So again, we're grateful for this proposal. We're willing to work with the manager and the direction that the council provides. But again, bottom line, we want to help our customers, and this is a good step in ensuring the relief that they need.
Stephen, have, has the A C C ruled at all or given any hint on how much they're willing to let you forgive?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Cunningham, that is a proposal that went before the A C C today. And so I've got Lynn Peterson, who is our senior director for customer, the customer experience on the line with us. From, from my reading, and Lynn, please jump in if I'm missing something here. But the payment plan arrangement, it is eight months minimum. There is also a two hundred and fifty discount to customers who, who have accounts and arrears. And that is eligible for customers who are in our discount program, as Mr. Manager had earlier.
And I, and will the A C C object if we match the two fifty? In other words, if we match the two fifty for the customer, would they even care? I'm just, I'm just trying to figure this out.
I, I think, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, the five hundred thousand dollars that has been identified for CARES funds for utility customers is going to go a long way in assisting those customers who have delinquent accounts. And so it will go a long way. And again, we're trying to read through what was approved today by the A C C. So, I mean, how great that impact will be, we're still sifting through that. But I think bottom line, the assistance that the city has passed will go a long way.
And that's, where I'm going is, is that I'm saying, look, if the A C C is going to let you, is the A C C saying you're allowed to take two hundred and fifty of CARES money? Or are they saying that you're allowed to forgive two hundred and fifty dollars per count? That's my question.
All right.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, I am going to defer to Lynn Peterson. And Lynn, I'm hoping you might be able to address that, since this was something that was passed earlier.
And Stephen, while Lynn's joining, also have, clarify what the, you said eight-month minimum payment period. Does that mean that any payment period, any, any payment plan that we put into effect has to be at least eight months long or longer? Or did you say that backwards?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kazachik, that is the minimum that was approved by the commission.
So it could be twenty-four months?
You know, we're, we're willing to work with our customers in any sort of payment arrangement that they're willing to make. We just want, want them to, again, get ahead of their bills so that they can stay on top of their.
Yeah, so I agree with all the questions, the salient question is what, what, what we do shouldn't matter to the A C C. You know, if they're giving you direction, you and Southwest Gas, the utilities' direction, if we come in and backfill to help, help that go even further, why, why should that matter to them?
Would you like me to take that?
Would you like me to take that?
Please Lynn.
Please.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. So today, the ACC ruled in how we should move forward with handling these delinquencies. We don't have the order in front of us, but it is our understanding that what we have been, what we will be ordered to do is to place all of our customers on an eight month payment plan. When I say all customers, anyone who has a delinquency would be placed on an eight month payment plan. For those customers that are part of our low income program, those customers will also receive a $250 credit or the amount that they're in arrears, which ever. So if they only owe 240, then they would receive 240. So it could be stepped down if they don't owe the entire 250. Will the ACC, one of the questions was whether or not the ACC would allow us to take funds from the city to supplement what they have ordered. The answer is yes, they would allow that.
So I guess, I guess we're, we're kind of all in agreement. We have a blueprint here and I think we'd be in compliance, Wally and Stephen. And, and Tucson Water will be on board with you guys too. Let's figure out a way we can uniformly forgive that 250, have the city match up to that much per customer. All right. And then you guys put them into an eight, 12, I don't care whatever you do on the remaining part of that arrears. So that means if you've got accounts that are over, if you've got accounts that are over $500 or if it's in arrears over $500, you're going to get at least half your cash and you may be able to get more. And, and we can probably work in some things where you guys don't have to eat 250 bucks on every customer. I mean, if people are doing the right thing, we need them to be doing the right thing. We want to get everybody out of debt as quick as, as we can. But the bottom line is.
Go ahead, sorry.
But the bottom line is, is that there's obviously a path through this. And look, the council isn't going to, we appreciate you guys coming to the table. We're not going to try to, we're not going to, we're not going to get hardcore about this for a minute. I mean, you guys got some time to make sure you're navigating through. But I, I think we're all kind of on the same page and we're just kind of asking you, can you work with our team and make it happen? I guess that's, that's where the rubber meets the proverbial road. And I'm going to defer to Steve Kazachik right now.
Just real quickly, because I want to put a caveat under what you said. While in principle, we're all in the same, same, heading the same direction. They may have thousands of accounts and we don't have thousands of $250 chunks of cash to throw at this either.
True, true. And so that's right. The, the, the underlying caveat to that is yes, we have to make the money work. And your budget is, you know, $1.5 million between the four utilities. So remember, let's make the money work as best as we can. And I think that's kind of the overlying, the overarching discussion. I'm going to go back to you, Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, I, I appreciate the conversation. I know for a fact that, you know, both T P and Southwest Gas are at the table where, you know, we're breaking our heads. I know our city manager, our finance team is, everyone's breaking their head to make sure that we get the best outcome for the benefit of the residents of Tucson. So I, I know that and the commitment from T P and Southwest Gas. I had their VPs and CEOs call me on a Sunday when, when I thought about, you know, this particular pathway to help our, our residents. And the minute that I texted them, five minutes later, we were on the phone trying to at least say, look, yes, we're on the same page. And we, we will dedicate our, our teams to finding a solution. So Mr. City Manager, and then I wanted to open up to any of my fellow colleagues.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate you calling on me. I was trying to figure out how to raise my hand on this thing and I'm used to teams. So we have to get more focused on that. So Mayor, I, I think the, this is great news from T P. Thank you Lynn and Stephen. Because when we started the conversation last week and multiple times, and then it's late as yesterday, we did not know that they would give, that ACC was going to give them authority for the credit. So the $250 is huge. I think that's a big deal and quite frankly, that's a game changer. Because it gives us opportunity to expand that, that footprint that, that we talked about. So rather than bogging down with all the detail, if, you know, you all have, have given me authority to, to work with the utility companies. What I will do is, you know, we'll dust off all those old conversations, but bring them into the new context of that $250. Because I, I do think that that, that footprint is now able to get larger with the, with the dollars that we have there, Mayor. Now I do know that Southwest Gas is, is going to be in front of the ACC down the road. And so we can keep you updated, but hopefully they'll be successful in a similar manner. So Mayor, also just wanted to give you, if we can move on from that.
I know that Councilmember Febras had his hand up as well as.
Can I make one comment too?
Sure, absolutely, Walter.
Thank you. But I defer to the Councilman.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Walter.
Thank you. Mayor Romero and, and council, I just wanted to say, we do not have the same authority right now to do the actual debt forgiveness. I need to be on the record about that. In our discussions, I know it's been frustrating and Mike has been banging his head against the wall at several meetings. But we, until we go to the ACC, we do not have the authority to do that at this time. And that's been one of the discussions we've been in. And so I just want to be very clear to everyone, we want to continue to work with you. And all the words that were said around this, I called a table today, were, we agree with and we want to continue to work with people. We've always worked with our customers and there's some concern because our, our bills are low for many months during the year, but we are coming into the winter heating season and there will be some higher bills. And we want to participate with the city however we can to make this program work. But at the present time, we don't have the authority to do.
Thank you for the clarification, Walter. We, we've been, we've been going around this and absolutely understand the, the, the possibility of doing this or not. I know that you are regulated, utilities are regulated. And so we understand what rules you have in front of you. We just want to make sure that we are doing everything we possibly can and moving fast to, to, you know, help our, your customers and our residents. So Councilmember Febras, and then I believe Councilmember Kazachik had his hand up. And I don't, I'm not seeing hands for some reason. So my other colleagues, if, if, if you figured out how to put your hand up, if not, just let me know.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank Stephen Eddy also, and also Walter Richter and people. Cause we've been working on this together since the nine months. And I thank you for your leadership, Madam Mayor, on coming up with, thinking this and the quick response from our folks. I wanted to find out, we had an emergency meeting last week and we came up with some decisions, we issued a little bit more money and the curfew. And now I wanted to hear from Mike about our plan to help some of these folks, these small businesses. It'll be directly affected by the curfew. So Mr. City Manager.
Your Mayor and Councilman Febras, I'll jump to that, Mayor, if you're okay with it. I'll just give a quick update on.
Also, Michael, I want individual families too, so we're going to help them. Thank you.
Sure, so the dollars that you all allocated at last meeting, I have, as I mentioned earlier, we've got all the agreements out, everything's moving well. We've also on a parallel basis been challenging the partners to get the application process moving. And so all of that is working and in process. I'll be able to give you a little more info. I also committed to give you weekly updates. My first update will be due a week from yet, a week from yesterday, which is next Monday. I'll be able to give that to you and, and can give you real time info on that as of Friday. So it is moving and the, all of the partners are on board with that. Everybody's excited, they anticipated, so they started moving with some of the applications and some of the conversations that there were necessary to include, Mayor, the, the tweaks that we made at the last, at the last meeting. Was, I think that was the question that, that Councilman Febras had. I did have some more info, but I'll wait to see, I think you had called on.
You're covering it, but somebody's like the, one of the foundations is closed. So how are we going to get the information now? How are they going to get the information, how people can apply for this thing quickly too?
Mayor, Councilman Febras not heard about a foundation closing. Any of them that.
The Women's Foundation supposedly closed the applications.
Which one, I'm sorry?
The Women's Foundation.
Okay.
On their website.
Sure, absolutely. So one of the things that we had done is we had told them to keep their application pool intact. And so folks that were not funded under the previous round will not be eligible. I think that's the, that may have been what happened. I'll follow up to make sure, but I know that particularly in the Y W C A and on the Women's Foundation for Workers and Families, we had a lot of folks that were already in line that had been told they would not be funding, but when funding was made available, they now are, are, are able to potentially get some. So just be aware that that could be it, but I'll follow up specifically.
Please let me know, Michael, thank you.
Yeah, Richard, you're done?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Steve.
Okay, so yeah, and I believe Mike, you're right that they've got a backlog of applicants and they're trying to make their way through that list. But so Walter answered, I believe the question, one of the questions I was going to ask in there is whether or not Southwest Gas is under the same direction from ACC. Either Walter or Michelle, when do you go before the ACC to get that direction? When will we know your, your rules? When will you know your rules?
I, we do, it's not on the calendar just as yet, but we anticipate that happening. I would say in the next month or six weeks, there's going to be a little holiday break in. But I know that the ACC is also very interested in getting these policies squared away.
Well.
We're experiencing.
Okay, that'd be a real shame if they took a, a six week vacation while people are about to have their utility shut off then.
I don't think it, it won't be a vacation.
Well, they're not addressing. Yeah, I, so this may be a question for Lynn, I guess Michelle dropped off or.
No, Michelle, Michelle is here.
Okay, I don't know, the, the screen keeps bouncing around, people keep entering and leaving. So can you give us a general idea as to how many people we're talking about? And if there's a, just a rough order of magnitude, what their outstanding bill is? Are we talking about 15,000 people owing $250 or 10,000 people owing $5,000? What are we kind of looking at? And if, and Mike, I don't, the only person who's kind of associated with Tucson Water that I see on is Tim Tamir. And maybe so that, so that the council can have sort of a general idea as to how many people we're even going to touch with this.
I'm happy to address that here, I have some of that.
Sorry, I don't know if T P wants to go first, go ahead.
And Lynn, do you want to go? I, I know you've got, I believe you have those updated numbers.
Sure. When we received the, the phone call, we pulled the number. So that was back on November 17th. And we know, we knew on November 17th, we had 3,727 customers that are part of our low income program that were in arrears. Those individuals owed on average $600. The spread is dramatic. The lowest at that time owed 3,000 and the highest owed, I'm sorry, the lowest owed $33 and the highest owed 7,000, which was obviously an outlier.
And for Southwest Gas, we have expanded our population to the tier two that was spoken about, the tier two population that was spoken about earlier. And so that increased our approximately 2,000 customers to 3,885 at a total of $502,000. So this is taking care of any customer who is considered low income.
Wow, so that's 7,000 people owing million dollars combined, rough numbers, not counting, not counting Tucson Water.
Mayor, Councilmember Kazachik, again, just for our low income program, water customers are about, and, and again, these are those that have delinquent accounts. This isn't a terrible, not capturing one of the low income program, but those that have delinquent accounts. Water customers, again snapshot from a bit ago, 1,301 wastewater, 1,248, environmental services, 997.
So that's, so just to kind of square the circle, I don't know that we can wait on the ACC to make a decision with respect to Southwest Gas, but we have immediate and urgent needs from the, from Tucson Water and Tucson Electric Power. What's sort of the game plan, Mayor or Mike, that you guys are thinking about right now for going forward to start getting these dollars out the door? Cause, cause we're, these are big numbers.
Mayor and Councilman Kazachik, the bottom line here is, we've got a little bit of time. The delinquent accounts through the end of the year, there's the TRF requirement, which as I already mentioned, I think we're, we're in good shape there. But with regard to the delinquent accounts, some of these are continuing to increase really on a monthly basis. My thought process now, and again, it changes by the minute sometimes because of new information. I will work very closely with T P to take advantage of that $250 to see how we can expand that footprint post-act. We can do that, we're ready to go, we've got our direction here, we're good to go there. Water side, I've asked the staff to start publishing the expanded criteria for the low income program to see what that footprint needs to look like. That will be a conversation for a future meeting with you as to what that policy implication might be of that. But clearly, we're not shutting people's water off January 1. We have a little bit of time to address that. I think the big piece of this is that we did have a lot of the folks that are in the low income program paying their bills. I think that's what you're seeing here, particularly on the water side. They were paying off their bills so that the link ones, although large, may not be the low income program. And, or those that are in the low income program. And so that's what I'm scrubbing that data to, to, to develop that game plan. We will make sure that, that those dollars are, I'll use the term credited before there's any talk of shut offs or any of that going forward, Mayor and Councilman Kazachik.
And my, my, what I'm imagining, Mr. Ortega, is that we move as quickly as we possibly can with utilities and with Tucson Water, I think we need, need a plan, an action plan as to how we're going to address the, the delinquent accounts that are low income, same, same criteria that we're using with, with our utility companies and your, our utility partners. So what I'm imagining is that we move as quickly as possible. And I know that Southwest Gas and T P are doing everything they possibly can to work with us to, to, to help residents. So what I would like to see for Tucson Water and sewer is a written plan so that we can approach those, those customers or those residents and families that are actually in need. Because I know that there's a big amount of money that, that we have in arrears. But I think we need to make sure that we're targeted, just like we target it with utilities. And I see Stephen Eddy's hand up, go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I just wanted to, to make a point to what Steve, Councilmember Kazachik was addressing. You know, I don't want to downplay the significance of, of this allocation. It is a, it is a big amount and it's going to go a long way. But as part of our communication to our customers, not just for this effort, but for all customers who are in need, there are other dollars available, particularly through lie heat, low income home energy assistance program, which we will be communicating to our customers to ensure that they get the assistance that's available to them so that they can, again, get the assistance.
Yeah, Stephen, I think that we have to make sure that we're, you know, making the, all of these different pots of money stretch as much as we possibly can so we can help as many families as, as possible. So any type of connection we can do to other families, whatever, you know, T P can put into the equation and then with the cares funds from the City of Tucson, so that we can help as many families as possible. Absolutely agree with you.
I think it's a collective effort on all of our parts. So I know we're working with Tucson Water and Pima County on that issue. So I just wanted to make sure that that was known. And again, we appreciate the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll move quickly. I can cover the next two items very quickly. One is just to give you an update. You also had allocated $1 million for the community health needs, I think is what we called it, which is the purchase of the rec, mobile rec centers, the mobile vans. The staff has been able to secure all vans, all six vans. We've taken delivery of one already, and so we're working through the rest of those. And we'll have those ready to go by the end of the calendar year. That also includes the recreation equipment and the cones and barricades and so forth that you all had directed us to do. On a related note, we have been able to secure a ADA compliant portable restroom trailer. So we're pretty excited about that. I mean, that was one of the passions that Councilmember Februs has had for a bit now. So we will have that and be able to deploy that either with the rec centers, the mobile rec centers or independently. But we have, well, we will have that available. Also, working with our federal lobbyists, we have been able to secure emergency blankets to the Salvation Army. Again, Councilmember Februs was very concerned about that with the cold weather coming. So thank you, Councilmember, for help on that. Also, our housing and community development folks have been working with the Community Foundation, purchased 1,000, over 1,000 sleeping bags that arrived yesterday. And we've already figured out how to distribute about 950 of those. So I just wanted that to make sure that you were aware of that. Just very quickly with regard to testing, just very quick numbers as of yesterday. U-Doll, we've tested 27,000 people. El Pueblo is 3,000. We are working on our pop-up testing, which began on the 6th, which began this, this last Saturday, continues tomorrow at the Golf Links Library, Miller Golf Links Library from 5:00 to 8:00, and then Reed Park from 5:00 to 8:00 on Friday. We're also expanding hours at El Pueblo. Thank you really for your leadership, Mayor, on that and pushing that those hours are expanded on Thursday from 1:00 to 4:00. So I want to make sure that you were aware of that. We are seeing a uptick again in our employee testing as well as some of the, the positive numbers. Currently, we've tested 442 employees with 30 of those coming up positive. Just in the, the recent past, we were at about the, let's see here, about 5%, but just over the past week, it's jumped to almost 15%. So we are definitely seeing the impacts within our population of employees as well. Mayor, I have this info. I'll distribute it to council later this afternoon, but happy to answer any questions, Mayor.
Mr. Manager, I just wanted to, the last piece that I wanted you to talk about is the enforcement of curfew.
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. So sort of important, right? So two, two parts of that. One is the curfew ordinance that was established by the council and in effect on Friday. We have had several requests for information on that, how many citations have been issued, et cetera. I checked just a few minutes before this meeting started with the chief. No citations have been issued yet. What they're finding is through the education process, when they tell someone, hey, did you know about this? And you need to comply because the way that we had worded the ordinance is compliance. That's what we want is compliance. And if someone is belligerent or not following the directive, then a citation is issued. I did talk to, to the chief as well about the importance of reminding folks about the masking or the mask up ordinance. And so they are on that and will continue down that path. So at this point, that enforcement effort is continuing, but they are getting good compliance when they are stopping folks and reminding them about the, about the ordinance, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any additional questions from my colleagues? All righty, so I think we can move along. I do know we have some guests for our next item. I want to thank Walter and Stephen and Michelle and Lynn from our partners in TP and Southwest Gas for being here with us. I know that we're going to continue working on this and find the best solution for our constituents and your customers. And Mike Rankin just physically raised his hand. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, you mentioned, and thank you, by the way, Mayor, you mentioned at the beginning the intention to in, continue and extend what the mayor council approved back in May and what you included in your earlier proclamation about the expanded areas for seating for businesses. And so absent any disapproval or objection from the council, that will serve as a direction to the manager that we will continue that program as you described. Thank you.
And Steve.
Sorry, this is really clunky. So Mike, the governor issued an executive order last week that didn't appear to change anything that we're already doing other than perhaps allowing liquor licenses to not necessarily be immediately adjacent to a building. Is that, you're reading on it also, or otherwise there's no real change in what we're doing?
Councilmember Kazachek, members of the mayor council, I think that's a pretty fair assessment. I will note that the governor did indicate a stepped up level of enforcement for businesses that are found to be in violation of previously issued orders, giving an indication that on a second offense, they could face a closure or revocation of their license, which typically would be a liquor license. So he did include that. The governor also issued some direction about public events of more than 50 people that really didn't change the, anything here, because what the governor provided in that executive order was that for those types of events, they already could only proceed if they secured a permit from the local jurisdiction. And so the governor's executive order says that if a local jurisdiction like the city were to provide a permit for a large public event, then we can only do that if we required additional safety measures per the Department of Health Services and CDC. And then we have to post what those measures are online and we have to take some steps to enforce it for that particular event. As a practical matter, we haven't been permitting large public events for a long time now. So Pima County during their special meeting established some procedures where they might consider these types of permits. So I, I think it's a good idea for us to look at what the county has adopted. But as of right now, our approach has been to not permit those events in the first place.
But with respect to the extension of premises that the mayor is asking about, that we, we are, our options are not constrained at all by what he did, right?
Well, that's correct. And council member, that as the mayor mentioned, the mayor and council acted on this, what, almost seven months ago to put in similar measures that the governor was including in his executive order last week. So the governor's actions may free up the business's ability to, to get their liquor license expanded to cover the areas that we've already allowed them to expand into. Just by way of reference, the real estate department has advised me that there's something like, nearly 40 businesses have taken advantage of the program that the mayor and council and the mayor included in her proclamation back in May.
All righty, thank you so much, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you. What I wanted to just put on the table, we don't have to have exhaustive conversation on this. Our transit fares that we put a moratorium on expire on the 31st of December at the end of the year as well as our moratorium for public housing evictions. So we will have to, we don't have another meeting in December. We only have the mayor and council budget retreat on the 18th. And so, Mr. Manager, I believe that that might have to come to us at that time to at least address both those issues.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, unless you want to give me direction now to explore it, I mean, I'm happy to do it. So just so that I'm clear, it's the moratorium on transit fares and then the evictions of public housing, is that right?
The city of Tucson owns, yes.
So here's a thought. I know that we're going to be tied on the 18th. He gave me direction. I can bring it back to you. We've got an essence delay of 30 days from the beginning. I can bring it back in the first meeting of January, as long as I have authorization to extend it an extra 30 days. You can deliberate it during the January meeting with an expectation. If, if you wanted to do something differently, you could do it for the first of February.
I, I'm absolutely 100% in agreement with that.
Do you want to continue the moratorium till the January, is what I'm hearing? I agree with you.
Your Honor.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was gonna make, I was gonna say, let's go ahead and make that a motion. So he's got clear direction. The other thing I'd say is that, look, in principle, everybody wants to do the right thing here. But it is important that we take a look at the numbers before we go any farther than 30 days. So let's do the 30 days. Let's give the manager's extension until the first meeting in January. And then we, at least we can discuss the numbers at the retreat. I think that's a little bit more responsible. So I move that we extend the moratorium to the first meeting in January and that we review the budget concerns during the retreat.
Second.
Mayor, I would also suggest that that would be the shut offs for water as well. So there's just so that I'm clear, there's three things. Water, fares, transit fares and evictions from public housing. Is that correct?
When I said moratorium, I meant the moratorium on all utility fees, evictions and the transit fares, yes.
Second then.
So there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All righty, Mr. Manager, anything else on this particular item?
No, Mayor, I think we covered it all. Thank you for your.
Okay, thank you all. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate it. And we move on to item two. Item two, time has been set aside for an update on the Tucson Industrial Development Authority. Just want to thank Mr. Larry Lucero, who's the chair of the Tucson Industrial Development Authority, who is here with his counsel, Chuck Lotzar, to speak to us about, oh, we are going to do a presentation about all the work that you have been doing, Larry. Mr. Manager, did you want to open up the item or should we go directly to Mr. Lucero?
Mayor, the only I'll say is, again, another great partner in the community, a great opportunity for us to partner to accomplish some great things that, that we may not either be able to do individually or without each other. So I would suggest to you that we've got a great working relationship with Mr. Lucero and his board. We look forward to continuing in that relationship.
So, Mr. Lucero, before you begin, I'd like to just make sure that we have enough time for Q and A. So if you could keep your presentation to 10 minutes and then allow for conversation and, and Q and A.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Larry Lucero, the president of the Tucson Industrial Development Authority, and appreciate the opportunity to address the council. And I am going to rely on the clerk's office to proceed with the presentation. We shared the presentation. We're not going to use all 59 slides, please. We're only going to shoot through the first 20 or so, because I think that is the gist of the message. So if we could begin, Roger, I would appreciate if you could share that screen.
Give us just a minute, please.
Okay. The first few slides are, we're going to go right through because they're basically technical slides that are probably understood only by our city attorney, Mr. Rankin and Mr. Lotzar, because they speak to simply the, could you slide through the first slide? Thank you. So we're simply a nonprofit corporation with corporate powers. However, our powers are limited by statute from the state of Arizona. We have seven board members. You can proceed to three. And they perform a very responsible role in terms of being stewards of the, of the funds and do study the issues very carefully before making any decisions. We have a chair, a president and a vice president that are elected by the board members. And we're the only ones that actually can act on behalf of the authority, but that is only after approval by the board. Generally, what else do we do? Proceed, please. Basically, you know, we, we provide low-interest loans and grants for financing of projects as defined by the, by the Arizona revised statutes. Those projects, though, allow us as an IDA to actually provide programs or assistance to projects statewide. However, knowing that there are other IDAs in the state, we have constrained ourselves to simply working within the city of Tucson. Other IDAs have done otherwise, so we're not one of those. Go, go ahead, please. You know, we've built capacity. We've assisted small business. We were an original funder of the, I think, the YWCA's nonprofit loan fund, which is, continues to, to provide assistance. We follow the established statutory language that governs the creation IDAs. If you move on a little bit further. It spells out the relationship with the governing body, which is the mayor and council. You appoint the, the directors of the board. Those directors can only be registered voters of the city of Tucson. There is no ward residency requirement. What that means is that they can come from any ward. And the final item there is that city employees and officers are not eligible to be appointed to the board. Proceed, please. So our, our three kind of primary activities, and I'm going to start with the small business lending side. The staff that actually assists the small, the Tucson Industrial Development Authority, not only is Chuck Lotzar the general counsel, but Business Development Finance Corp. has an agreement with the IDA to actually provide the staffing. And so we rely on Gary Belenda and his staff, Karen Valdez is the, is the key person that provides the, the support. So it's a very lean machine in terms of what we do. And just as a, as a snapshot, we currently have 24 loans that are over two and a half million. And in just the last year, with COVID really putting a kibosh on activity, we processed just a little over a million dollars in loans, if you could proceed, with a few new businesses. As a, as a response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the board with consultation with the city of Tucson has tried to partner as best as we can and try to be as generous as we can to participate in the programs that have been made available to small business in the city of Tucson. So we've allocated a loan to the Business Development Finance Corp. to assist with the PPP program that the Small Business Administration made available on an emergency basis through the CARES. In addition, we've also authorized an additional half a million dollars to BDFC to augment that effort. And as a result of the earlier slide where you saw, we have outstanding loan activity in our portfolio. We've taken a look at each individual business that's in that loan program. And we've done deferments on six of those at this point. And we continue to review their, their conditions, make sure that they stay healthy. The second leg of our effort really focuses on the thing that we really are known for, and that is assistance to help home buyers. You go on to the next slide, please. Three basic programs have been part of our, of our delivery, Tucson Pathway to Purchase Program, Tucson, the Pima Tucson Home Buy Solution Program, which is an IGA between the city IDA and Pima County to provide services not only within the city, but also throughout Pima County. And then the final tool that's available is a mortgage credit, is a mortgage credit certificate program. Basically provides a credit for homeownership up to $2,000 in, in terms of a credit, which helps folks in terms of their monthly expense. in in terms of a credit, which helps folks in terms of their monthly expense. Next one, a little more detail on the Tucson Pathway to Purchase Program. Twenty one hundred home buyers have been served. We've aggregated over, you know, three hundred million dollars worth of revenue to be able to assist that process along for those twenty one hundred home buyers. And the program, in addition, has been able to provide through the resources that we've been able to 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 gather, providing down payment and closing cost assistance of over thirty two million dollars. Those are not insignificant amounts. And and those programs, Pathway to Purchase Programs, basically were focused in two thousand sixteen and in two thousand eighteen, a second phase, where it's authorized in order for us to really try to address the foreclosure crisis that resulted from the two thousand eight, two thousand nine crisis. And so the Pathway to Purchase Program has tried to address those those bad times with this type of assistance for assisting folks to to purchase their homes. One of the benefits of that, on the next slide, please. One of the benefits of the Tucson Pathway to Purchase Program has been that there are fees associated with that. And as a result of those fees being collected, we've been able to provide the Arizona Department of Housing with over seven million dollars with those fees. We provided those dollars to A D O H to reinvest in the Tucson Rapid Rehousing Fund, which has been a real useful opportunity to try to assist local programs. So those dollars have been made available to the Department of Housing. And in turn, those dollars have been transferred to three primary organizations here in our area to try to assist the programs in Tucson that help folks. And, you know, primarily, we've been working with, I'm trying to find my note real quickly to tell you that Pima County with the. One quick second. Pima County as well as the Jackson Employment, the Jackson Sullivan Employment Center, along with Old Pueblo Community Services, Primavera, One Family Services and the Community Bridges are some of the organizations that have directly been using those resources. Sorry, I had to look through those notes and try to get to that. But that's been a very important benefit of the program in terms of reinvesting in our community, a significant amount of money for a very focus on ending homelessness in our in our area. Moving on, the Pima Tucson Home Buy Solution Program is, as I described earlier, a combination of an effort between the Pima IDA and the Tucson IDA. So the services are throughout the the county as well as in the city of Tucson. Forty seven hundred, over forty seven hundred home buyers have been served. Again, a large amount of money was made available over the last few years to achieve those results. The final leg of this program is the Mortgage Credit Certificate Programs. And those, next slide, please. Those are a very simple approach to assisting folks who are home buyers. If they want to add this additional benefit to their experience or to their portfolio, how they manage their their monthly mortgage payments. The Mortgage Credit Certificate Program allows them to to take advantage of a credit that's still available. And could you go on to the next slide, please? So you can see that since two thousand eleven, these Mortgage Credit Certificate Programs have been helpful in providing assistance to folks who are home buyers and who need additional resources to to try to make sure that they continue to make payments on their on their home. So this portion of the of the, or the third part of the programs here, this Mortgage Credit Certificate Program has been very helpful to to keeping folks in their homes for extended periods. The the final aspect of our effort, small business lending, affordable housing, as well as the last part of our our effort is focused on multifamily projects. And if I could slide to the next slide. You see, in the last few years, since two thousand fourteen, we've been involved with multifamily projects. And we've been able to gather sufficient revenues to do these four projects as examples of of what's possible. And we can comment on a little bit of this aspect a little bit later as we conclude and and we discuss with the question and answer session. And that is, multifamily projects clearly are one of the most underutilized aspects of the of the program that we offer as Tucson IDA. As you can see, our last project concluded in two thousand nineteen. As a result, you know, we've asked questions with respect to, okay, why isn't investment attracted to this particular segment of our housing, the mix? And quite frankly, we've identified some issues with the Arizona Department of Housing that perhaps stand in the way of dollars being invested in multifamily projects that address affordable housing. You know, quite clearly, you know, all of the construction that's occurring in our county and in our city is for much higher level multifamily housing projects, not the the kind of affordable housing that we're we're really in need of. So that's an issue that we need to explore a little bit deeper. But it's just a slide that I wanted to share with you. One additional aspect of the Tucson IDA that provides service for you, and that is on the next slide, is the city has asked the IDA to help manage three different lots that are located in the in the urban core, in the in the downtown area. Block one seventy five is a large block that has existed for 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 many, many years. It's a parking lot. We've taken responsibility over it for for you and have done some work on it. And it operates as a as a parking lot, providing much needed services. Pre pandemic, quite frankly, it was a very active parking area. But we expect that that will pick up as soon as the vaccine is available and then and business becomes more active downtown and people come back to work downtown. Block one seventy five primarily, though, is a great developable parcel that has great potential, an entire square block with almost just a little over two acres of land that is available for development. That you see the zoning there and and the type of issues concerning archaeological aspects has been identified, but not yet resolved. But we have done some preliminary archaeological work on that. That information is readily available to any developer that may want to look at that. A smaller lot on the next slide, known as Block one seventy four, is at Stone and Council. A smaller parcel, however, has the same characteristics as Block one seventy five, although on a much smaller scale. Again, we have looked at some opportunities to potentially partner with the Rio Nuevo District to see if there's any opportunities for assembling larger parcels to potentially offer that up as a as a developable site for additional office, commercial or or residential development. The the last and most intriguing, I guess, slide we want to talk about is the four fifty North Main. A very small parcel. It's really two parcels that are connected. It's just a little bit less than an acre. But when you look at the location right there on Saint Mary's and and Granada, we think that this site has great potential. It's been used previously as a construction staging area. It had a building on it that we demolished in order to make it more attractive. And so we've done some preliminary work to try to to market this. If you go on to the next slide, please. This particular site, I think, is really ripe for an opportunity to create an affordable housing project there. And we certainly are encouraged. We've had a conversation with Ward One staff on this slot about this parcel. And I think we have great potential here. But knowing the 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 neighbors and the and the constraints that we're that we're dealing with, some of the issues that we do need to address is that we may need to look at the original agreement that charged the IDA with managing this lot for you and helping develop it. There are some constraints on the lot itself that we probably need to address. That is a conversation that our General Counsel and Mr. Rankin's people will continue to to work out. We are also going to, like I mentioned, have had a conversation with Ward One. I think that was very productive and very positive. And as well as our efforts with planning and development, as well as the Housing Director has had some experience in her previous work that potentially we could attract some folks that she's worked with in the past to to take a look at this particular area. And of course, we can't do anything unless we get concurrence from our adjacent neighbors. The Upper City Neighborhood Association is very interested in any development there and is encouraging, well, actually is very supportive of of development there as long as it is is appropriate and meets the the goals of of the city as well as their, the the leadership of that of the neighborhood will have a tremendous amount of participation in that they have been very engaged in conversations with the IDA throughout our effort to to market not only this lot, but also Block one seventy five. So they're intimately engaged in in our relationship with with the IDA. So we're we're going to continue to work with them and their leadership. Have a good working relationship with it. As as Manager Ortega has mentioned, you know, the IDA has has many opportunities throughout the 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 community to work in partnership and will continue to do that. So so what's next? This is our last slide. So what's next? Well, the future looks bright. I know that we're dealing with the the most challenging of all times in our in our histories as as leaders of this community. I can assure you that our loan, our committees that we have, we have four committees that are very engaged in in work. Our Loan Review Committee, that's chaired by Sandra Barton, will continue to work on small business lending and try to attract small business to the loan programs that we manage. Getting the word out, the Marketing Committee with Patricia Schwab and yours truly have been very hard at work in trying to develop on social media as well as billboards, as well as the website, a much more attractive outwardly looking appearance for the IDA to try to inform people more specifically about the programs that are available as well as to celebrate the amount of work that has gone on over the years with respect to the efforts to get people into homeownership, assist small business, as well as continue to try to attract investment into some of these areas that you deem are are priorities for you. Strategic Plan Committee, Neil Echols, the the Vice Chair, as well as the his Mimi Porto, Misha Porto have been very active in taking a look at where do we go next? And and we've been working very diligently on creating other opportunities that the IDA can participate with other entities within our community. In particular, one of the ideas is to try to increase the financial literacy of our small business folks with respect to avoiding bankruptcy as as much as possible. And finally, one little effort that Pima Council on Aging has been involved with, Judy Klinko brought it to our attention and has been steering this one along. And that is a home sharing feasibility study where we hope to come up with some recommendations with respect to how we might be able to help Pima Council on Aging match up some of their clientele with with others who are looking for places to live and hopefully share residences that are that are that are large enough for folks to 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 share and and be much healthier that way rather than putting them in institutional housing. So it's a very exciting effort that we're involved with. And and I continue to, as the Chair of the IDA, continue to work with the Thriving the O Five work, which has been very interesting as well as challenging with respect to the efforts there. We certainly stand ready to help any of the business that may be in need of loan activity for the ultimate build out of the of the O Five. We're very excited to participate in that effort. Your Chair of the IDA always is responsible for making sure that we continue to partner with the organizations out there. We also have a very strong working relationship with Habitat for Humanity with all of their affordable housing issues that they've identified, always set are at the table with them to try to come up with solutions. And going forward, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to focus on the Arizona Department of Housing. I don't want to try to boil the ocean here with respect to how do we address the affordable housing issue. But one little slice, if I may, if I may focus on one little slice of the of the effort is to try to reduce the amount of time that the investors have had to put up with to get responses from the Department of Housing. I think there's investment that would be willing to participate in multifamily housing development in Tucson. If we could just shorten the turnaround times that the Department of Housing has. They have asked for input. We have drafted comments to them. And I think that in order for us to be successful, we will delicately work with them to be sure that they realize that they have an opportunity and a responsibility to help solve the affordable housing crisis that we have in this state and in our community. I think they can be a player. We need to put their feet to the fire a little bit. However, we think that there are solutions and we'll continue to work with them. And I know that's one of your priorities as well, Madam Mayor and Council. And we stand ready to continue to put our shoulders to the wheel and push forward on that. So hopefully, that's been helpful. I can answer any questions. Hopefully, you still have time.
Thank you, Larry. Really appreciate the presentation and the dedication by all members of the City of Tucson IDA. And what I wanted to make sure that we talked about today is the partnership between the City of Tucson IDA and our own City of Tucson Housing and Community Development Department. And if there are any ongoing conversations about affordable housing and how best to partner between the City of Tucson Housing Community Development and the IDA.
Well, thank you. That's a that's a great segue. Yes, we have absolute interest to continue that partnership. As Manager Ortega alluded to, we are open and hopefully can be helpful with the efforts of Ms. Morales in the Housing Department. She has some experience having come from Mesa, I believe, with some organizations, nonprofit organizations that have been good in other locations, but yet have not made an entry into Tucson. And we stand ready to encourage investment as well as a careful review of what's right and what's appropriate. And so she has that experience. And we are already have begun the conversation with her to try to figure out how we can work together to attract investment to address at least one little segment, and that is multifamily housing. I think there are opportunities, in particular Ward One, because we do have some land that I think is is ready for that kind of development. And hopefully, with the assistance of Council Member Santa Cruz's staff and and her leadership, that we'll be successful in that. I'm very optimistic that we have not only that little lot at four fifty, but also there's adjacent lands that the city also has ownership of that can potentially be assembled in a manner where we could have a really attractive, and I want to say cool, that's an old word, kind of a cool development. I think that ties in a lot of elements that could be very attractive. So hopefully, that's not too far from what you're thinking.
Oh, thank you, Larry. I I am really familiar with the the pieces of land that the IDA owns. And I just want to make sure that that they're. And I just want to make sure that that there's communication and partnership between the City of Tucson IDA and the Housing Community Development Department so that we can plan where the gaps are, right? We have to make sure that we're working hand in hand with you with the IDA to fill the gaps, whether it's homeownership opportunities or affordable rental housing or senior housing. Conversation, I think, has to continue and we have to take advantage of historically low interest rates in terms of borrowing and being able to make that available to both the IDA, the City of Tucson, but also our City of Tucson resident. I'll open it up for my colleagues to ask questions if they have any. But my question is, we have, you know, we have been working with the City of Tucson IDA for quite some time, for decades. And I see the IDA as an opportunity to be part of our economic development strategy in the City of Tucson. There are other IDAs within Arizona that do much more in terms of economic development, small business lending, and thinking creatively how we spur economic development. Can you be, you know, can you answer if there's any particular projects that the City of Tucson IDA is is taking a look at in terms of economic development strategy? Lending, you know, investment to startups and small businesses, microbusiness loans, et cetera?
I guess in a, and the short answer is yes, all of the above. We have a very open relationship with many organizations in our community, not just the City of Tucson. And we've been, and I've been remiss not to give credit to Connect Tucson and the efforts of Barbara Coffey in our partnership. It's been extremely very beneficial for us to participate in the various programs that you have initiated with respect to the pandemic. But it goes beyond that. The focus on corridors outside of the downtown area with respect to South 12th to South 6th. I know Vice Mayor Cunningham wanted us to focus on Houghton Road and Broadway, but kidding aside, that's really a an opportunity that the IDA stands ready to participate in any way that we can. Our Business Development Finance Corporation folks are always at the ready to consider a project that we can try to figure out a mechanism to finance it. Gary's group has a great deal of creativity in terms of how to address those kinds of challenges. We've recently been approached by Rio Nuevo as well to take a look at one specific project in the downtown area to try to assist an expansion of an existing small business that will create more jobs. And that's really, our, our principal mission has been job retention, job creation in terms of our focus on economic development beyond the the great focus that we've had on homeownership. But you're absolutely correct. We can't do successful homeownership and assist folks to become home buyers unless they have adequate employment. And so we absolutely focus that, continue to focus our efforts on small business. Not to say that, you know, the Industrial Development Authority really is a misnomer. It really is a good small business lending organization. However, if there's ever a project that is substantial, such as Block 175, that could be, you know, a very large endeavor. The IDA is that, is at the ready to try to assist. And you know, I'm just a layperson. And I think that the assistance of, you know, really one of the premier councils with respect to how to use revenue bonds, private activity bonds and the such gives us a great opportunity. I think we have the right tools in place. And we will look to continue to Sun Corridor, Pima County's economic development efforts, as well as I mentioned Barbara Coffey's efforts to identify organizations that are primed to expand or even relocate into our area. And we stand ready to participate in that effort as best we can.
Thank you, Larry. Any questions from my colleagues? You can physically like raise your hand because I'm not seeing the chat.
I'll just throw one quick one in. I appreciate your outreach, the work that you're planning on doing with Ward One, the O5 work that you're doing over there with Ward Three. I'm just going to outfirm, he's got a very exciting potential senior housing project that you need to talk to Richard about.
You know, Councilman Fimiras, there are other developers out there, small developers who have reached out to us. And I, you know, I could have gone on and on forever with respect to the various activities that we've helped move forward. But the Indevco Organization, which is a national organization out of Texas, has created a new effort to try to identify micro builders. Then these micro builders are really mom and pop construction companies in this community who are at the ready to start developing auxiliary buildings, you know, splitting lots so that they can build additional housing. We're very excited about that opportunity. But those are micro developers, micro builders. But we also stand at the ready to participate with other developers who finally are starting to see that there's a real need to build affordable housing. And let's, you know, there are builders and developers and investors out there that have really been successful on building high end, the high end luxury apartments. But we need to address the need for multifamily affordable housing out there. And there's, there's not one ward that stands out actually that needs it more than any other. It's, it's a really citywide issue. And so.
We have a citywide issue, Larry. That's why I think what the mayor said is looking at the gaps in our system. And what we have is running what we do. And I think the Pawman Nervous Stress Report is a good indicator to let us do this and look at the gaps that we have and study. And then I'm glad that you're there because I'm glad you, you're, you've got a new role, a new challenge for the county, the city and the county. And I love that you're at that seat right now. So thank you for your efforts. And I'll get with you on this other project as soon as we get the neighborhoods more approving of the, of the project. So thank you.
We stand at the ready, Councilman Mayor and Councilman Fimiras. We stand at the ready to help in any way we can. And one of the early efforts, you know, in the affordable housing, homeownership efforts have been, have been targeted at areas where there were high levels of foreclosures as a result of the 08, 09 recession. And then really that that recession has worked itself through. However, the impact on families was so extreme that we really have spent the last, since 2016, a very concerted effort to try to assist folks in investment in those hard hit areas. And there, there are some zip codes that were identified by the Arizona Department of Housing where priority should be given. And we focused those efforts and investments in those areas. And I know that several of those zip codes are in your ward. So we continue to pay attention to that. We certainly don't have unlimited resources yet. We think that we do have an opportunity to serve throughout this community.
Thank you so much, Larry and Mr. Lotzar. Thank you for your time. We really appreciate it. I want us to be able to expand the relationship between the City of Tucson and the Tucson IDA, explore much more on economic development potential. There are some things that the Industrial Development Authority can do that the City of Tucson cannot. And that includes mortgage revenue bonds and other type of bond programming and lending to small and micro businesses. So the City of Tucson, I'm proposing to my colleagues that we review our comprehensive economic development strategy so that we present that to federal agencies so that we, we as the City of Tucson can apply for more grants for economic development. So hopefully I will be bringing to my colleagues on the council in January this conversation. And I think the City of Tucson IDA will play a very important role in looking at economic development in a fresh, new approach that we can take advantage of what we can do together. Without any additional questions, we've gone on for about 40 minutes. So I appreciate your time. And of course, you're always invited to come back to, to Mayor and Counsel for additional conversation.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to help in any way we can. And the board stands ready always to participate in any efforts. And looking forward to our continued partnership. Thank you so much for allowing us to provide the short briefing.
Absolutely. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you.
Have a wonderful rest of your week. We will be moving to item three. Time has been set aside for discussion of a primary jobs incentive request for Too Simple. I just wanted to open up this item by saying how happy I am that Too Simple is adding more than 40,000 square feet to its campus, along with the potential of creating almost or more than 200 jobs. And so I want to also give a shout out to Councilwoman Lee for her work with Too Simple and with her shepherding this particular item through the process in the City of Tucson. As our former Councilwoman for Ward Four, Shirley Scott would say, you know, Ward Four is, has hundreds of square miles and we are seeing lots of growth and lots of potential in Ward Four. And so I just wanted to open up the item by saying that we're very excited. I'm very excited of the possibility of seeing Too Simple grow in the City of Tucson. So with that, I'd like to offer the opportunity to Councilwoman Lee to see if she wanted to add a couple of things and open up the item and then turn it over to to City Manager Ortega.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. To say that I share your excitement would be an understatement. I know we've talked about this a lot and I'm incredibly excited and grateful to be able to be a part of this process with this great company and these brilliant minds behind the technology being developed at Too Simple. So I know that, that everyone will get into the meat and potatoes of the business a little bit. But I just want to share a little bit of reasons why I'm really excited about us looking at this jobs incentive. Really, as the mayor said, with this expansion of the facility that they'll be talking about, this is going to allow the business to advance their technology and support their mission of improving safety and efficiency of self-driving truck technology, which as we know is going to expand well beyond the boundaries of our city. And it's really exciting, also including about 2,500 or 25,000 square feet of warehouse and lab space and an additional 10,000 square feet of office space. Currently, they have about 200 employees in Tucson and about 30 current job openings. And the expansion will create an additional 75 new high wage jobs. And when we met with the company and had a virtual tour, and Robert, I want to thank you for giving us a virtual tour. Unfortunately, I couldn't get inside of one of the trucks, but I know it's coming. I was really excited to understand the scope of these jobs and the benefits that are available to the employees that work here. The salaries range between 50,000 and 150,000, the average wage being about 85,000. So these are really good paying jobs. And they even cater in lunches from local small businesses. So I asked my staff to cover their ears because I didn't want everyone to leave and go work at Too Simple because it's a great company. So I'm just really excited to, to be a part of helping move this through the system. So with that, I'll give it over to Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Councilmember and members of the council. So we do have Mr. Robert Brown with us from Too Simple, available to answer questions. And Barbara Coffey from our Economic Initiatives Office, actually our Economic Development Director. This, as you mentioned, Mayor, is for a primary jobs. Instead of, it's the first piece of that, which is the assessment. And so this will be a non-refundable $5,000 to start the independent financial and economic analysis. So that'll turn over to Barb. Barb, do you have anything to add or Mr. Brown anything to add before we give it back to the council?
Thank you, City Manager and Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. You made it easy today. My remarks can be short because you have said all the great things that this is, this entails. We're just happy to have a company like Too Simple in our community. And, you know, I would just point out as the economic developer that with a company that has its headquarters in San Diego and now is opening facilities in Texas, we want to be sure we take care of them here in Tucson. And so it is an important opportunity for us to assist their expansion, make it easy for them to grow here. And as you said, we're looking at a project that is about $9 million and will bring those new jobs in its first phase, about 75 new jobs. But with that opportunity, as the mayor said, to grow that beyond. And so with that, I guess I can tell you that Robert Brown is here and also Developer Representative Bill Kelly with Diamond Ventures is also stands ready for your questions.
And Barbara, I just wanted to ask, this is the, the initial process as we begin, this is for Mayor and Counsel to review and give the go ahead for the initiation of the primary jobs incentive, as well as the possibility of a G-Plaid and side-specific tax incentives.
So this will take a look at the economic impact analysis, right? This sets the pathway for us to review that. We will bring that to you back on January 5th for your review and, and follow up consideration to move forward.
And I did want to offer an opportunity to Mr. Robert Brown that represents Too Simple. I've had the pleasure of meeting and you know, just wanted to make sure that we gave you an opportunity, Robert, to add anything to this conversation that Mayor and Counsel should know about this project in the City of Tucson.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counsel. Pleasure to meet some of you and see some of you. We're very excited. Like I said, I'm joined by Bill from Diamond Ventures Tucson. You guys have really nurtured and seen Too Simple grow. You know, I've been with the company three years now and I started, we were on Grant. I don't know, probably had six people and five of them were interns, you know, and now we're a kid around, we're a real company now and really growing and, you know, bringing hopefully some positive attention. I recently got invited to be on the board of Sun Corridor, so very honored about that. Hoping to leverage some of our, kind of our, our interestingness, you know, with, from whether it's 60 Minutes or YouTube and all the attention we get to bring positive attention to Tucson and bring more companies like Too Simple, 222 Tucson. It's a very exciting discussion. Thank you guys all enough. And it's been a really fun journey and we're excited where the next years will take us.
Thank you, Robert. Really appreciate it. Any questions from my colleagues on the council or comments? All righty, seeing none. Councilmember Lee, would you like to forward this with a motion?
Absolutely, Mayor. Yes, I would like to forward this on to, I'm sorry, I don't have something formally prepared, but whatever the next phase is in the process that Barbara was mentioning, I would like to make that motion.
So there's a motion and a second. Any continued discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Robert, thank you so much for being here with us. We're looking forward to, I hope that was painless.
That was great. Thank you.
We're looking forward to continue seeing you grow and very excited about this possibility. I know that you are helping create long-term high wage jobs for residents of the City of Tucson. And we know that you already are an important part of our economic development puzzle. And we know that you already are an important part of our economic development puzzle. And like you said, we're hoping to see you expand and have Tucson be a, a center for the type of jobs that you're helping create for the city of Tucson. So thank you so much and let's proceed. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you. Alrighty, we are moving on to item four. Time has been set aside for discussion of the city of Tucson, twenty twenty-one state legislative agenda. Mr. Manager, I know that Andrew is here with us.
Right, Mayor. What I would suggest is that you consider taking item four and five together. Legislative agenda and then the other is the state federal legislation update. Andrew can weave them in. And just for the council, this is the annual opportunity to set the priority for the coming year. Andrew is on the line. He does a great job of, of carrying forward your direction and so I'll turn it over to Andrew, Mayor, if that's okay.
Absolutely. So let's make sure that we do item four and five, Andrew, since we have you. You're going to be on a roll, so go ahead.
Well, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager. Thank you for the introduction. With the current schedule of January eleventh being the day that the state legislature will go back into session annually, the city council and mayor consider the annual state legislative agenda in December prior to the January start. So we've taken input from mayor and council and staff on what should be in that agenda. And this is our opportunity for mayor and council to consider that draft agenda and give approval to it. As you know, the, the actions of the state legislature have a great impact on the city of Tucson and the mayor and council. Things like tax increment financing and wayfare bills have had a significant positive impact on the city. On the other hand, we've seen things like HRF sweeps and other attempts to take away funding from city programs and projects and of course preemption bills that detract from the authorities of, of the city and the mayor and council that have a negative impact on us. So we follow and engage with the state legislature very closely. As far as the twenty twenty-one state legislative agenda is concerned, the top priorities of mayor and council seem consistent from the previous year. They include protecting city funding, defending local authority, investing in local economic economies and infrastructure, enhancing public education, health and safety, and protecting our water supply. Just some of the key additions from last year. Again, based on mayor and council input, we are adding an item asking for additional COVID-related assistance, including health measures that actually make an impact in reducing transmission of the virus. We're looking for changes in small cell legislation that passed a few years ago to provide additional opportunity for local input on the location of small cell poles and other infrastructure. We're looking for other transportation funding, not only for our roads, but also for enabling more safe multimodal infrastructure in, in Tucson. Housing is a real priority for mayor and council. The housing-first philosophy of how we approach housing is important and we want to be able to convey that to the state legislature and state agencies. We always focus on the low-income tax credits of, of implementing a state program on that, as well as more money for the housing trust fund. I'll add that I was interested in what Mr. Lucero was talking about earlier about some, some issues that investors may be having at the Arizona Department of Housing. I'll keep an ear to the ground about that and ask around about whether there are some staffing issues at the Department of Housing that might be holding up investors in affordable housing. So I will follow up on that. Based on what Mr. Lucero and the IDA reported earlier, climate mitigation and adaptation is important, especially now with the declaration of a climate emergency. PFAS, we're getting some good participation from Director Cabrera and ADEQ and we're thankful for that, but we still would like additional technical assistance and of course funding and other participation from the state in dealing with some of our PFAS issues. Those are some of the key changes and additions, I'd say, from previous years in our agenda. With your approval, then IGR staff will go out and meet with state legislators, senators and house members to convey the mayor and council's priorities. We also meet with other cities and other stakeholders from across the spectrum to talk about what's important to Tucson and find opportunities for partnership to forward Tucson's priorities. And then the last thing I'll add is that as bills start to be introduced at the legislature, as in previous years, I will be bringing lists of those bills with recommendations on them to mayor and council for your approval of those recommendations, either to support bills, oppose bills, monitor bills, et cetera, as those bills come in. Again, early in session, sometimes those lists are long, but they're always based upon, again, your priorities as you direct me going into that, to that legislative session. With that, again, I thank mayor and council and city staff for your input on the draft legislative agenda to this point, and I look forward to your comments and questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I also want to inform the council that with Andrew's help, my staff has put together a meeting with our legislative elected officials from Southern Arizona. So both House and House and Senate members that represent Southern Arizona, we're putting together December fifteenth a gathering so that we can share our legislative agenda and have a conversation with our elected representatives that go to the House and Senate and just have a conversation with them as to what we can push and how we can partner and work together. That's coming on the fifteenth. All of your offices are invited to, to attend. Also, I just wanted to talk about leadership, Andrew. I know that there's new leadership teams in the Senate and, and House. Of course, there's House Speaker Bowers that will continue to be the, the Speaker of the House and Senate President Fan. I look forward to working with them. Last year, I, or was it this year? I think it was this year. This year in January, I had the opportunity to go visit with them and, and, and talk to them about our priorities as a city. I hope to do that again, even if it's through Zoom. And I just wanted to talk about the new leadership teams on the Democratic side. On the Senate, Democratic Leader Rios is the new leader of the minority in the Senate. And Democrat, House Democratic Leader Bolding, Reginald Bolding is the leader of the minority in the House. Also, we have some leadership positions from Southern Arizona elected Senator Victoria Steele is the Senate Minority Co Whip. And Representative Domingo de Gracia is the minority, minority whip on the House. So if you wanted to add to that, Andrew, more than happy to hear.
No, Mayor, that's, that's great. Our, I know many of you know our state legislators well. Often when I talk with them, they mention to me that they talked to you, members of the mayor and council and talked about different city issues and priorities. So I appreciate that and it's always really helpful to provide input, perspective and support for our state legislative delegation from the Tucson area in Southern Arizona. It's not an easy job. And they really appreciate knowing our opinions and feeling like we support them as they try to fight for us at the state legislature.
Andrew, one, one thing that my team really brought to my attention, see if there's a possibility, at least exploring the opportunity. The state legislature preempted cities and towns across Arizona in local governments from single-use, from banning single-use plastic bags. And as a city, we recently adopted a zero-waste-by-2050 goal with our climate emergency declaration. I know it's a, it's a touchy, touchy issue, especially because we don't have a lot of leeway in the House and Senate, but tell me about, you know, any, any sustainability and, and climate measures that are being talked about, or can we expand our legislative agenda to include issues like this, the, the plastic bag, the zero waste, the climate emergency that we've passed?
Sure. Yeah, Mayor Romero and members of the council, we can absolutely add an item or add to the list of, of legislation that we'd like to repeal that the, the, the preemption on plastic bags, or as they call it, at the state auxiliary containers. We oppose the original preempt, preemption and we have supported bills since, including some that have been sponsored by local Tucson-area legislators. The last one that I remember was sponsored by then state representative and soon-to-be Senator Kirsten Engel, who tried to repeal that preemption of plastic bag local regulations. So I will add that at your direction to our state legislative agenda and see if we can get another bill and hopefully at some point we'll be able to repeal that preemption so that mayor and council can implement your, you know, your climate change-related policies here at the local level.
Well, we already have a water protect our water supply. I, I, I can imagine that, and we have protect, defend local authority. So I, I wonder if, if there's any commentary that we can put on either, right? Because I know that Councilmember Finbres has some ideas in terms of repealing some laws and, and preemption measures that were taken, but I really would like to make sure that we put an item on our legislative agenda that, that talks about not just water supply and security, but also climate change and sustainability issues. And if that is something my colleagues would want to add, we all saw the effects of climate change firsthand. We, we didn't have a monsoon this year. We had more than a hundred days of a hundred degree plus weather. And we saw our very own beautiful Catalina Mountains on fire. And so it, it is something that is urgent and I, I do want to see at least a mention of it in an encouraging message to our legislature that
Madam Mayor, I would, I agree with you and I would add that to the motion that we accept these items and I would recommend, I would move that we approve the following priority items as, as our twenty twenty-one, the state legislative agenda. At, at cladding what you just mentioned, Madam Mayor, for Andrew, that's my motion.
Okay, so that, that's a motion in a second and I want to open it up for my colleagues for their, for their thoughts and advice. Councilmember Kozadchik?
Thanks, Andrew. The, I went through your list also and there, there's no mention of addressing the preemption on small cell pole local voice. And with Richard's permission and whoever seconded it, I would ask that that also be added to the list. I know there's a meeting with the Arizona League of Cities and Towns tomorrow and Kirsten Engel is going to be addressing them on this exact subject and it's, it's not just a city of Tucson issue, it's a huge statewide issue at every local
I agree, Stephen. I would, I would accept your friendly amendment to the motion.
So amendment accepted and the, in the second are accepted as well. Any others that like to add or comment? Alrighty, don't see anymore. And so with that, I'd like to make sure that we have a motion in a second. No further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Did you have any other federal legislative issues, Andrew?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll roll into item five then with an update on state and federal legislation. The key item here to bring mayor and council up to speed on is discussions of a potential COVID relief bill in Congress. Many of you may have heard that there are at least a couple of proposals that the United States Senate is considering presently in terms of having a COVID relief bill. Again, we've supported the HEROES Act, both iterations of it over time. But there's been no relief bill following the CARES Act. And there are many cities just like Tucson that have now spent their coronavirus relief dollars and the needs in the community are, are the same, if not even more now for COVID relief. There, so the two proposals, there's one that's considered a bipartisan proposal being worked on by Senator Manchin of West Virginia, Democrat, and Senator Cassidy, a Republican of Louisiana. That would be a bill that would be about nine hundred and eight billion dollars. It would include about a hundred and sixty billion dollars for state and local government. That's less than what was in the previous HEROES bills that passed, but it's, it's sorely needed. There are discussions, negotiations presently about if indeed those dollars would be included in the plan and then how they might be distributed. We've been in close contact with Senator Sinema and Senator Kelly's offices and their staffs and making sure they understand what our priorities are to see as much relief come to Tucson and to our region and state as possible. The other proposal is Senator, Senate Leader McConnell's proposal. That's right around five hundred billion dollars, so a little bit more than half, but you know, close to half of what's in the bipartisan proposal. But importantly, the McConnell's proposal does not have any dollars for state and local government. So it does include some money for, for education, for childcare, but it doesn't come close, we think, to meeting our needs. And so we're putting our efforts into supporting the bipartisan plan. This is all moving very fast. The, the current spending authorization for the United States federal government expires this Friday, December eleventh. So there is talk about doing another continuing resolution that will keep the federal government open for one more week. And in that week, hopefully we'll work through not only differences over the spending bills, but also a COVID relief bill that would then be included in the final approval of the spending bills for fiscal year twenty-one. That's the latest at this point and as we get more information and certainly if we're close to passing a bill, we will make sure that mayor and council are informed of the latest proposals and what they may mean for Tucson. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. I do see Councilmember Finbres' hand up. Go ahead, Richard.
Adam, thank you, Madam Mayor. Andrew, any word on the postal distribution bills? Are there any action on those happening, especially worried about Cherry Bell's Distribution Center, which we fought since the twenty-eleven to keep maintained open when it was told to be closed? The other thing is I want to thank Congresswoman Ann Kepatrick, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to have a letter from the mayor and council go out to her, thanking her for swift action and getting those disaster blankets back and route back to Tucson. We're, you know, that was so important. We were, everybody kept talking, we're going to lose it because the Department of Defense wasn't going to release any money to pay for those things. And I want to thank them, I want to thank our also for the, the sleeping bags that we're able to purge for the most, the most vulnerable citizens of our community. So I'd like to see you, us, send a letter to Congresswoman Ann Kepatrick to thank you for swift action that she took on us. And I want to thank all our elected officials for moving on this quickly. And, and the other thing, Andrew, is not only the Postal Distribution Center, but our military bases. There's talk that Senator, President Trump was talking about BRAC again and doing some things and, and we can't have that happen. And we need to make sure our base, because they provide a lot of jobs there too. So I know that this is all speculation right now because the transition is happening, I hope smoothly. But we'll see. Thank you, and thank you, Andrew, for your efforts and also thank Tracy Tucker and BTFP for the swift action and getting this out, this information out to all of them.
Great. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Finbres, first. Thank you for your leadership on the, the blankets. You've always challenged me and my team to look at opportunities for military surplus and other materials that might be available to help our community. And so here was an opportunity, you, you pushed us to make sure this opportunity actually came to fruition and you know, thank you for, for challenging us and I agree with you. Bracy Tucker Brown, in particular, Tracy Tucker. Bracey Tucker Brown, in particular, Tracy Tucker, does an amazing job for us in DC. And she worked very closely with Congresswoman Kirkpatrick's staff to make sure those blankets became available. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Andrew, too, for your swift action and your actions that you've done for the last several years on working on this and making sure Tucson is at the forefront of dealing with issues and preventing things. Like I said, 2011, that Postal Distribution Center should have been closed, but because of the action, all my colleagues on the council, our mayor has done, we've been able to keep it open.
Yeah. So, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, members of the council and Councilmember Febris, just address a couple of your questions. First, the postal service and then the Defense Authorization Act. So first, on postal service, there is funding in both of those proposed COVID relief bills. One's a little better for the postal service than the other. The bipartisan bill provides an additional $10 billion in new funding for the postal service. That's good. The McConnell bill does have $10 billion in it for the postal service, but it's loan forgiveness. In the CARES Act, there was a $10 billion loan for the USPS. If the McConnell bill passed in its current form, it would just allow the postal service to write off that loan. But there is at least some bipartisan support for additional funding for the US Postal Service, which is important, of course, nationwide for all the reasons we've talked about, and in particular, to make sure we have the support we need to keep Cherry Bell going. And then as far as the Defense Authorization Act, yes, there has been a... Well, first off, there were differences in the House version and the Senate version. Both did a really good job of supporting Tucson and our missions in Southern Arizona, whether that's Davis-Monthan, Fort Wachukka. So we felt pretty good going into the negotiations. The negotiations concluded, and the House and Senate versions were consolidated, all very good. And not only do they support our Southern Arizona missions, but they do include some money for PFAS remediation. And so we're eager for that bill to pass. As you mentioned, Councilmember Febris, the president has threatened to veto that bill. It would be the first time in 60 years that a bill was vetoed and threatened to not pass. It's passed every year for the last 59 years. The president isn't happy about a couple of provisions. One has to do with the naming of military bases and monuments after Confederate generals. There is language in the bill that would take away or direct the Pentagon to start moving towards changing those names. The president opposes that. There's also a completely unrelated measure having to do with Section 230 of the Federal Communications Act, which provides some protections for internet companies like Facebook and Twitter that the president disagrees with. That's nothing to do with the military, but the president wants a change in that. It is threatening to veto the defense bill. And as of this afternoon, it looked like both the House and Senate, both Republicans and Democrats, were going to pass the bill anyway and override the president's veto. So we'll see how that plays out. By the way, there is a 3% increase in military pay, as well as many other measures for the military in those bills. So a lot riding on its passage.
Thank you, Andrew. I want to echo what you just talked about and give recognition to Councilmember Febris for his hard work and dedication to helping those residents that are houseless in our city. He has had this dedication to our homeless community for many years and has never wavered, as well as his dedication to being very alert and working for the benefit of our distribution, our USPS distribution center. We did have a meeting, Councilmember Febris and my office, with Senator Sinema to talk about any movement, there's possible movement in consolidation of postal offices and distribution centers. So we had a very productive meeting with Senator Sinema about this. They're on top of it, and so I'm really happy. And of course, our congressional delegation, both Congressman Gijalva and Congresswoman Kirkpatrick are on top of it and very supportive of our position as a city with our USPS. I also want to congratulate, take this moment to congratulate our newest US Senator from Arizona, Mark Kelly. He has been sworn in and is already at work for the residents of Arizona. He was kind enough to give me and my team and our lobbyists in DC, Tracy Tucker, the opportunity to sit down and talk about our interests and our priorities as a city. And so he's very attentive, being a Tucsonian himself, asking about infrastructure projects that we're interested in, asking questions about very specific streets in our community, but also wanted to make sure that this relief bill made sense for the city of Tucson. And so we had the opportunity to approach him on the funding and how the conversation in the US Senate was happening. We really feel as though both Senator Sinema and Senator Carrier are going to advocate for the city of Tucson in terms of how the funds are distributed to local jurisdictions and the state. So he's really working on making sure that we have, that we have, that we have the leg up when it comes to funding and that distribution of funds. So I also, most recently, just wanted to inform you, I signed on to a letter to the incoming Biden administration, along with Mayor Garcetti of LA, de Blasio of New York, and other mayors around the country to advocate for the extension, to extend and strengthen the National Eviction Moratorium and Mortgage Relief, as well as continue the PTA protection program and extend and expand unemployment for workers, including undocumented immigrants, extend paid sick and families leave, and forgive student loan debt. So with that, I'm opening it up for you all to see if you wanted to add any other issues for our national legislative agenda.
Thank you for doing that, Madam Mayor, because that's so important right now, especially with the needs of so many citizens in our community. You know, we're not out of the woods yet, so I appreciate your efforts in doing that, especially the moratorium on the evictions and the funding that is sorely needed right now for our community.
Yes. Thank you so much, Councilmember. Anything else that you'd like to add?
Do we need a motion on the federal state to accept, or?
No, I think we're good. It was just a report, and I'd like to take this opportunity to share with you what I'm doing on my end so that I keep you all informed. Anything else, Andrew?
No, that's all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much, Andrew. Really appreciate your hard work. So we're done with item four and five, and we move on to item six.
Madam Mayor, have we voted on the legislative agenda items? I know we discussed it. I made a motion and.
Oh, okay, on item four?
Yes.
We didn't vote on it?
I'm not sure. I'm asking.
We have the motion carried, Your Honor.
Alrighty. Thank you, Councilmember Febris. Yes, we voted on it. I thought I recalled that. So we're on to item six. Does anyone have any items to remove from the consent agenda? Alrighty, hearing none?
Your Honor?
Yes, Roger.
Item C has been continued at the request of staff, and we have a request to pull item T.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you so much, Roger. Item seven, does anyone have any items for future agendas? If not, study session is adjourned. The regular session begins at, what time is it right now? Begins at 5:30. So we have an hour for break, and we'll see you all at 5:30 for regular session. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much.